If we tried to put all of our airplanes in the air from the Marines, we would only be able to put about 25% of the airplanes in the air. So that's a big problem. And that's been a problem for not just the last eight years, but for a continuing time period. So if we're going to increase the defense, I want it to go to those things. Readiness, O and M, and making sure that our equipment is taken care of. Go ahead.
My question is basically, so we allocate $500 billion a year for this...
Actually, last year was $600.
Yeah, it was more even. So we allocate all this money, yet somehow we still can't fund those planes? And whatnot? I don't understand the discount.
Yeah, it's a good point. It's a good point. We talked to the vice chiefs just about a week ago or two weeks ago. We talked about that, of how we can maybe save money in the military and also make sure that our young men and women are ready to go into battle if they have to go into battle and they have the right equipment. I agree with you. And that was one of the big issues that we talked to the four four-stars about. How do we save money in the military? And then I'll end it with this. When we talk about BRAC, I think you were talking about how many bases we have and if we could close them. We did our BRAC, which is base realignment and closures. It didn't save us any money. We lost those bases, but it hasn't saved us any money. In fact, it's cost us money. So if we're going to do that, if we're going to go BRAC, tell me how it's going to save money. Otherwise, when you shut down a base, you hurt that whole community, that whole economic driver there, and you also change your mission. Because we're not going to open another base. We're just closing that one and losing it. So...
Those people are in different countries. They're not in America. Those bases are in different countries.
No, 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 no. No, BRAC. You can go back and look at the last two BRACs. Two times ago, they decimated California. We got by on the last BRAC, but the one previous to that? We lost many bases in California, and they lost bases all across. Now, I agree with you. When I served in the 80s in Germany, my post is no longer there. We shut down 40, 50 posts in Germany. But most of the impact is in America. Okay, we're going to go to the center. Joshua? And the young lady in the back with the white sign? She just looked around. There you go. I think you were first up. And my eyesight's about as good as about 10 or 11 rows. So if I call you ma'am, and you're not...
Ma'am is good. Thank you for holding this meeting today. We really appreciate it. We have many people from Simi Valley here today. You have indicated in the past that you are pro-life regarding issues regarding Planned Parenthood as being a part of your tenet of the Catholic faith. Is that correct?
I am pro-life and I am Catholic, yes.
Are you familiar with Pope Francis's encyclical on the environment, the Laudato Si? This document by the Holy Father speaks of our responsibility as Catholics to care for our environment and to protect our natural resources.
Amen.
Yet you have voted to loosen or eliminate every possible environmental regulation that comes up for a vote this year. We have two of the largest environmental disasters in our district. Santa Susana Field Lab and Liso Canyon Gas Leak.
And Chiquita Canyon Landfill.
And Chiquita Canyon Landfill. We have children who continue to get weird cancers, and you've had 8,000 families fleeing their homes to escape poisonous methane gas. Those areas didn't have enough regulations when those disasters happened to prevent them from happening. And now you are voting every single chance that you have gotten this year to further loosen or eliminate any new environmental protections. I would like to know how you could justify this behavior, especially knowing that you have the lives of every single one of us here. Every one of us is affected by the methane gas. Every one of us. Every one of us is affected by nuclear fallout, and it was supposed to be cleaned up by 2017. And we have seen nothing from you in terms of coming to meetings. There were two meetings two weeks ago for Santa Susana. There were two meetings three weeks ago for Liso Canyon. You didn't attend any of those meetings. There's actually a bill introduced at the end that has just been introduced to end the EPA in 2018. I would like to get a comment from you right now that you would not vote to end the EPA.
Thank you.
Also, I have brought you a copy of the Laudato Si, the encyclical on the environment. I expect that as a fellow Catholic, that you will look to protect our environment for us. Yet you have voted for H.R. 26, the Rains Act, which allows Congress to let regulations sit on a desk for 70 days and then it becomes null and void. You voted for H.J. Resolution 41, allowing big oil and gas companies to not disclose payoffs regarding drilling and fracking. You have voted to allow dumping of coal into streams in West Virginia. You have voted for Resolution 44, which amends land use regulations to allow drilling and fracking on public lands. You have voted for Resolution 123 to allow the killing of wolf cubs and other taking of wildlife in Alaska for no good reason. And the most recent Scrub Act, which allows people like you to scrub our regulations. I would like to know what you feel about that.
On the one question you asked, I agree. I won't vote to get rid of the EPA. We'll go to this side. Okay. I only heard...
Answer the question. Answer the question. Answer the question. Answer the question. Answer the question.
How can you justify voting in favor of the Rains Act, which then gives another step and allows Congress to go ahead and let it sit on their desk for 70 days and then nothing? It becomes null and void. All of these regulations become null and void.
Ma'am, I think you're taking the Rains Act and you're just taking a little part of it and you're... Remember, the biggest part of the Rains Act was that they were going to report to Congress. They were going to send... They were going to send a report to Congress. So what you're saying is you want a bureaucracy to be in charge, but you don't want elected officials to ever see it.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, then, we will disagree on that all the time.
Next question. Next question.
Okay. Right there in the back? Right, no, right in front of you. Right in front of you. There you go.
2018.
It's coming soon, baby. 2018. 2018. 2018. 2018. 2018. 2018. 2018.
Mr. Knight, I disagree with the woman who said all those things. I want you to support the agenda that's on the table. I want you to support our president. I want what has been laid out to Congress. I want it to go, and I want it, I want to support it. This is what we have been hoping for for many years. We've lost sight of what it means. It doesn't mean it's true, but this is what we believe in. This is America. This is America. This is what our country is all about. We have values, and we believe in the Constitution of the United States. I agree. We're going to each have to give something on each side. We are Americans, and this is our country altogether. We can't be divided, and they can't destroy us. The Democrats, Republicans, Independents, everybody, black, white, green, or purple, we're all together in this country. And this...
Green and purple is what we mean with all this pollution.
...and we represent all of us.
What's the question?
We're not going to get everything we want, but we have to be together. We're Americans, and this is all our country.
We're going to go back. Right here. Everyone that we can. The young lady with the white slip holding up.
Congressman, closing the Medicare Part D donut hole is an integral component of the ACA. The donut hole is the amount seniors had to pay for prescription drugs before the ACA. An average of over $2,000 a year in the difference between food and medicine for many. Can you guarantee you won't vote for any replacement of the ACA that doesn't include this essential ACA component that benefits not only the elderly but the small businesses that cater to them?
Yeah, I think you've hit on a big part. And I know we will talk about the ACA. We'll take all those questions. The donut hole, for those of you who don't know about the donut hole, you feel lucky that you don't know about that. I do think that that's a big part of ACA, that absolutely we want to keep that involved. And yes, I want to keep that in the next plan. Yes. We'll go over there. I think the... With the yellow slip in the front row? I'm trying to pick people that I saw. I'll break really quick, but if I miss you, I'll work around. I'll work around as much as I can.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
On February 15th, the White House asked the FBI to knock down any stories pertaining to an ongoing investigation into possible connections between the Trump campaign and Russia. Thankfully, the FBI rejected this request. Since then, Mr. Trump has gone on a tirade against the FBI. He has tweeted that the FBI is a dangerously porous agency that leaks classified information. As a former member of the Armed Services and the LA County Sheriff's Department, what is your opinion of a man that denounces the media as the opposition and that openly criticizes any agency that investigates possible wrongdoing by a foreign government?
I love the LA County Sheriff's Department, but I was LAPD, so just for the record. I believe that the Trump administration shouldn't be involved in what the FBI should be investigating. Now, that being said, FBI has got to go out and do their investigation and bring forward that investigation so that we can see it. These things don't happen in a vacuum, and they don't happen in one or two days, and they don't happen on Twitter because somebody said something, and now we're going to have an investigation in the next six hours. So I think that if there was involvement, then there should be an investigation, and I'll go one step further on that. A year ago, Devin Nunes from the Intelligence Committee went to the Obama administration and told him that there looked like there was going to be a likelihood that Russia would have something to do with political campaigns, with hacking, with all kinds of things, and they were going to open a bipartisan investigation at that time. They did, and that is continuing on. So that investigation is still continuing. If you don't see Adam Schiff on TV, then you don't turn on TV because he is on every day on some sort of a press conference. Now, the chairman is on also doing those types of things, but that is an ongoing investigation. We expect that we're going to see something out of there. But the FBI should be doing their investigations, absolutely. And if they think there's wrongdoing, or they think there is something that should be investigated, then they should just go and do it. And I support FBI to do that. Okay, now, we're working.
Call in some people here at 4:45.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, I understand I can't call in 50 people at one time, but I'm trying to work around as much as I possibly can. Ma'am, can you step out here? Step one out so everyone can hear you. I don't know what you're talking about.
It's midnight, Jack. Good morning. I arose to ask you, will you fight with me to keep the Affordable Health Care? I'm passionate about the Affordable Health Care because I believe that's why I'm still alive. I didn't have insurance for 10 years. I went to Palmdale Regional Hospital. I was told that I had gallstones, which was a misdiagnosis. Actually, my appendix had erupted. Had not my large intestines and small intestines formed a wall against the poison, I would have been dead. But because of the Affordable Care Act, when Kaiser asked me to leave four times, Kaiser said, "I refuse to go." So after I had a hospital stay, I was sent home with medication, and I had a return visit. That is why, three years later, I still have Kaiser. Without the Affordable Care Act, they would have sent me to some county hospital I don't even know. So I'm asking you to fight with me to keep the Affordable Care Act.
Well, it's good to see you here today. So the Affordable Care Act, I'm going to give you my little two-minute spiel on it. Yes, I think there are a lot of good things. I do. And I've said that to many groups that we have met with. Yes, I think there are some bad things to the Affordable Care Act. So what you've seen from me is I've gone to every listening session that we've had in the House of Representatives to understand everything that I can about the Affordable Care Act. It's not something simple. It's very, very complicated. So I'm trying to understand as much as I can. I also understand that there are certain things that groups have come to me and that I believe in should absolutely stay. I've co-authored a bill for pre-existing conditions that has been put down in place in Congress, and that's part of the plan. I also believe that children under 26 years old, actually, under 27 years old should be able to stay on their parents' issue. I agree with you 100%. When we have a little bit of a difference, it's that this is a federal program. It's not a California program. And Cover California, I will say this in front of all the crowd, has probably done it better than any other state in the U.S. The premiums are still going up, but not like other states. Last year, I think Arizona led the pack in about 116% increase. I always say, you know, if your rent or your mortgage went up 116% in a year, that'd probably make you mad. I think ours last year here in California was about 7.9%, and before that, the previous year was again about 78%. So the premiums are still rising.
You represent District 25 only.
Okay, now, I'm going to take a question from back there. So, understand that some of the things I believe we can fix and repair this. This is a program that started back in about 2008, actually got implemented in 2010, 11. Took a long time. It's going to take a little while to repair it. But a lot of the things that are in Obamacare are going to stay. And my goal, as like I've told every other group that I've talked to, is that it would be seamless. You might not know anything has changed other than you...
We want to know.
You would get more options and more products, and your premiums wouldn't rise as fast. Those are the goals.
We want to know. Don't hide the facts.
Right. I can't hear everyone at the same time.
I have a question to ask.
Okay, let's go over to the young lady over here. And if you're the loudest, it doesn't mean you get the next question, but we'll...
Thank you, and I love LAPD. My daughter is LAPD.
There you go.
So, it is an outrage that you would vote on a plan that none of us are allowed to see or know the cost. And with no guarantee of continued coverage, will you commit not to vote for the secret plan that takes our health care? That is your question.
So I have said, as soon as there is a plan that comes out, we will absolutely put that on so that people can read it and see it. Now, that would be a difference from the last time, right? That would be a difference from the last time because Obamacare was never released online. It was voted at midnight, and nobody read it.
It was a hell of a...
I guarantee you didn't read it because the majority leader said she didn't read it yet. So, now, hang on. But as soon as a plan comes out, we want to put it out. And I think you've seen Senator...
Before you bowled on it.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yes, I will put that out, and I would love some interaction, absolutely. Say, "This is bad. This is good. We want to talk to you about this." Absolutely. Okay? That's how representative government should work. We've done these two, and... Okay. Why don't we, we're going to stay up front just for one more, and we're going to go right here to the front. This young lady, I think, was the first or second person in here.
Okay, I watched Donald Trump's thing the other night, and he, yeah, he mentioned a thing called VOICE, Victims of Crime Enforcement, okay? Which he's going to go after immigrants who make crime. Now, I have a question, you know? Are you going to support this thing? And if so, are you also going to support, oh, let's say, one that goes after criminals who shoot up, oh, black churches? Or criminals that shoot up Sandy Hook schools? Or criminals... Faces like that. I mean, there's a lot more criminals that shoot up other things besides immigrants who have things here or there. There's a lot more other things that need crime enforcement, you know? VOICE panel, you know? I don't see one for Sandy Hook. I don't see one for the black churches where all those people were killed or the children were killed. What are you going to do about that? Are you going to support a program to do that too?
So on the President's speech on Tuesday night, first time I'd ever heard of this VOICE acronym. First time, I think, a lot of Congress had ever heard, well, I didn't see any of those, but yeah, had never heard of VOICE. So I haven't looked into VOICE. I don't know what the heck it is. I didn't think that that was a good part of the speech, but that's all I will say because I haven't even looked into this. And I don't know that that's a program that's coming. If it is, it's going to have to be funded through Congress, or there's going to have to be laws written by Congress. Remember, the President doesn't write laws.
How can you support a program that goes specifically after immigrant crime enforcement when there's other crime enforcement that's so much worse?
Yeah, well, I support law enforcement to go out and arrest criminals. So, there you go. How about the young man in the back? We're going to try and hit the back a couple times too with his two hands up. He looks like he's motivated.
Yes, I'm a sick resident from Valverde, California. I live next to Chiquita Canyon Landfill.
Yes, sir.
At our final FEIR, you've had two representatives come to speak for you, and Valverde residents who were sick in the back and could not stand and had cancer were not allowed to speak. You fully endorse the landfill. In their own documents, the particulate matter will be severe for the lifetime of the landfill. When are you going to protect your own constituents? Also, they will be a major factor to global house gases, and yet you endorse them and your constituents are sick. When will you stand up for us? Tell them what you do.
We've talked to many people about Chiquita. Your group is a big group. The other group is a very big group that wants this expansion.
They have the money. They have the money. We're the sick ones.
Okay. So we've kind of looked at this. I was involved when Palmdale was kind of going through this too, and so I'm not without skills when it talks about dumps being expanded and taking on extra trash, maybe from a different area or from that community. Everything that we've looked at, and again, if you want to give your name and information to one of my staff that's walking around, we would be happy to meet with your group and talk to your group about this. But everything that we've seen, this will be...
We have two times the death rate as I've already confirmed, cancer. No one's coming out to us, ever.
We're going to take your information and get back to you.
Boo. Boo.
I'd like to speak. I would be surprised if they check your rating.
Okay, we're going to just hit that group, and then we'll come back up.
How will you protect the rights of disabled and transgender students? Do you support COVID-2?
And I don't normally do this, but I'm going to ask you to explain your question just a little bit more.
Well, let me start with the fact that the suicide rate between ages 10 to 24...
No, 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 just explain the question of how...
I want to know how you're going to vote when bills come up to protect transgender students and the bathroom bill. Does that, maybe that helps clarify?
Okay. So if, okay, I think this is around the bathroom bill. If you remember in, I think I was in the Senate, I voted against the bathroom bill, and the big reason, and I think I said this on the floor, was that if you're going to do that at a school district, then the school district should be in charge of that. We have elected people that are in charge of that. We have elected people who are in charge of the school district. If we are going to go above them and surpass all of their authority, why would we need a school district? So, hang on, hang on. The reason I said that was because...
How you empower the school districts?
Okay, but the school district could do it. So at the time, when I was in Senate, we had school districts. In fact, the biggest school district in the state of California had a policy for that. The Los Angeles Unified School District had a policy for transgender kids and a bathroom situation. So what...
Don't do anything.
What we had to do was then say, "Are we going to make this a state law and circumvent the 1,100 school business?" We're going to disagree on that. We're going to disagree because I think, I think when you're closer to the people, like a city council or a school district, you probably have a better grasp on what those kids need or what those cities need. We're going to disagree.
Rights are human rights. Rights are human rights.
Right there in the blue shirt, gray shirt. No, brother. Right across from you. He's been raising his hand all time.
Thank you, Congressman. I get my insurance, my family gets our insurance through my work, so we're very lucky in that way.
69% of...
We don't have to utilize the A.C.A., but there's a lot of people who do. My wife was hospitalized last year for seven months. The ACA, when it was passed, was passed with a lifetime maximum benefits ban, or they removed that lifetime maximum benefits. Had it not been removed, my wife would have been without insurance this year. Do you support keeping that as part of whatever plan that comes out of the House?
I think we're talking about lifetime caps. And we've had several meetings with groups, and I've talked about lifetime caps. It is something that is being looked at, and the only reason I say that is because some lifetime caps might stay in place, but most wouldn't. Again, again, these are all questions that are going through this plan. Now, remember, if we expand Medicaid from $413 billion this year to $1 trillion in about 10 years, it's... it's because we've opened up Medicaid and we've expanded it. Now, and I understand that. But I also understand that there's gotta be a point where, like, the young man here who started, it's gotta fit into the budget. So, if Medicaid is gonna grow that fast, then we've got to figure out how we can pay for it, not just for us. If, if all we're looking out for is us over the next five years, then we're gonna disagree on that. But if we're gonna do something for, for this generation and for future generations, it has to be sustainable. Okay. Okay, this young man right here. Go ahead, you got a question?
If that's how you feel... Um, if that's how you feel, then I think that you should also push for your colleagues in the House and the Senate to whatever this bill, whatever, whatever the replacement for the ACA is, that you all have to do, have the same healthcare the rest of us have.
I don't have healthcare in Congress. Sir, I don't have healthcare in Congress.
You don't have one?
I, I don't take healthcare from Congress. So, we're good. We're good. Okay, I'm good with you. I agree.
So, all I'm saying is that there's, there's some people, my condition could get worse, and I have no control over that.
Absolutely. When I got elected into Congress, there was an exemption that said our staff could go under something that wasn't Obamacare. I said, "No, that's not what we're gonna do." So, I agree with you. We're in agreeance. We could have, we could ask Congress, we could exempt our employees out and say, "No, no, no, you can do this." But I didn't.
So, you have Obamacare?
I don't. I don't take it through US... I've got it. You can go right there, sure.
Steve Knight, this is my first time at a town hall meeting to speak. I want to thank you for the opportunity. I worked for the Department of Social Services 25 years here in Lancaster. I serve the very stories that everyone here is talking about. The ones that need the services, the elderly that without Obamacare otherwise will not be here with us today. In light of that, I also want to highlight immigration. I was born in Mexico, I'm a US citizen, and I served the military. I see my brothers and sisters picked up all around Lillard County, all around California, through no fault of their own, productive people that provide jobs. And I want to know, my question to you is, in the agricultural field out through California, as our alleged leader, Trump, states that these very people are the ones creating crime throughout the United States. I get, I get that there are criminals... There are criminals, US citizens, and undocumented alike. And everyone wants people out who create harsh crimes inflicted on American citizens. I get that. But now that he's deporting friends and families and neighbors that don't fit that title... What is your plan, and I have a solution, what is your plan to replace...
I like solutions.
...the people that have put money in the corporations of the agriculture industry for cheap labor and bigger profits? A little bit of history! And I'm, and I'm all with this. Historically, administrations say we have an immigration problem. Well, guess what, folks? America created that immigration problem. Right? To the tune of what I just explained. All I need to say is the Bracero Program, Operation Wetback Program. Uh, funds from the United Home Workers that people who broke their backs, that US citizens would not do that job, and still would not do that job. In closing, I just want to say to you, come up with a bill that allows hard-working immigrants at the request of the agriculture industry with temporary visas and monitor them, and then pay them what they're due because we are filling their pockets.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep going if I can, sir, because you said you had some solution too. But I'll, I'll answer the questions that you were, um, asking me. Okay, so, the first issue is, I agree. The agricultural workers, we have about 50,000 visas that we offer in the United States of America for agricultural visas. I think that that is a travesty, I do. I think that we have probably 3, 4 million agricultural workers from California to North Carolina that work in this country. Uh, that should be the first group of people that we talk about if we're gonna do anything with immigration. Now, the second thing is, I don't think we're gonna get immigration reform. And the reason is, is because I think we can get bits and pieces of immigration. But when we've put forward a whole package, you understand that five states really control immigration right now. California, Arizona, New Mexico, Texas, Florida. If I put a sixth state in there, it'd be New York. So, the other 45 states or 44 states, they know we have an immigration problem, but they're like, "Ah, it's just a problem for you." So, every time there's a talk about a complete package, maybe I agree with 70%, maybe I agree with 90%, it doesn't go anywhere. So, we need to do little pieces. I agree with you. I think the agricultural workers should be the very first piece we have to accomplish. And either we do an expansion of the visa program, or we say that because you're, you're working in the United States, and we know that you're undocumented, or you don't have a visa, something like that, but you've bought into America. You have. And we have to work on that group of people. I agree. I think that's the first kind of part. There is a bill out there right now called the Bridge Act. I think that that's a part of what we can do. That's for DACA. And, uh, to make sure that they can stay here for another three years. Those are parts of what I think we can get through Congress. But when you talk about a complete immigration reform package, I'm an optimist. I don't see that happening. Now, I'll let you, give me any solutions that you got.
You've answered part of it, I was saying...
And I, I don't agree with the deportations that are happening. I do agree, I do agree, just like I told, I think, the young lady over here. If you break a law here, uh, and I'm not saying coming over the border is the law break, but if you break a law,
I was sharing, and I was sharing to a veteran here from the forces, um, uh, two days ago, gentlemen, two gentlemen that served the military in Alabama that live there, they are brothers, um, in Vietnam, okay? And most people and soldiers who served in Vietnam saw a lot of deaths, they had, uh, the syndrome, came back, started drinking drugs, pulled their records, found out that they had a DUI back in the 60s, by the way. Vietnam vets, that right now, as I speak to you, Mr. Knight, are in deportation proceedings. So, what can you do to prevent that from happening to future vets?
Please, give, and this is for everyone. Our number one goal is to help people. If you have an issue with INS, IRS, VA, Social Security, I mean, I could go on and on with the federal bureaucracies we have. But if you do, please contact our office and do it early. The biggest problem for us is somebody will come, and they'll talk to Kathy, or Chris, or Isaac, or somebody in my office, and they'll say, "I've been working on this for seven months." Please don't do that. Come to us. Because I guarantee you that we can do 100% more than you can do on your own, without a doubt. Now, when, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I know that the executive order came out by the President, there was a big problem at some of the offices. There was phone calls all day, non-stop, all day. I understand that. I understand the impact of an executive order like that. But you also got to understand, there were families calling us saying, "We need to get our family member back, or we're working on this. Can you help us?" So, help us too. You can yell and scream at me all day, pretty thick-skinned. But my staff is here 100% to help people.
Thank you. Thank you for handing me out, Mr. Steve Knight.
You're welcome. Okay. Okay, this young... Right here in the white shirt. Remember, I can only call him one at a time, so...
Uh, I'm 17 years old, and on July 13th, I turn 18, so I will be voting on the 2018 midterm election. Uh, my question is, um, do you think that is okay, it is okay for elected officials to lie under oath?
I don't think it's okay for anyone to lie under oath.
And do you support the resignation of Attorney General Sessions? Would you support the House bringing impeachment proceedings against Sessions?
Well, something happened on Twitter today, but there hasn't been any impeachment proceedings. Uh, if you saw my post a couple of days ago, I did, uh, say that I thought Attorney General Sessions should recuse himself from anything that has to do with... Hang on, we have 17-year-olds up here, so let's try and be respectful. Um, we're gonna follow this really closely this week with Attorney General Sessions. Uh, I agree, it's a huge issue when you lie under oath, whether you're trying to be the Attorney General or if you're in court. That is a huge issue. So, we're pulling the transcript, trying to understand in context what happened before we do anything. Okay, we're gonna go to the back. And go on the left side, Joshua. There's about three or four people there that have been patiently waiting.
Good morning, Mr. Knight.
Good morning.
I have a couple of bones to pick with you.
Here, they only wanted them.
I just wanted to get that right out. And just for the record, I am not being paid, although I did receive a bag of carrots that was very tasty. Before the election, before the election, you made a, you finally made a statement about who you supported. And you said you didn't support either Donald Trump or Hillary Clinton, but you were going to vote. And then, surprise, surprise, after the election, you voted for Mr. Trump after all. So, I'm a little confused about support and vote. Second of all, I do want to bring up, um, women's health. Planned Parenthood provides essential services to people who cannot get to a doctor otherwise. I'm one of those people when I was in my twenties. I received care from Planned Parenthood. And if I did not receive regular pap smears, it's quite likely I could have developed cervical cancer. And that's not even counting ovarian cancer and uterine cancer. These things sneak up on you because, believe it or not, women's systems are just a little more complicated than boys'. So, when I hear this outrage about Planned Parenthood and taking away the opportunity for women to receive care that they might not otherwise get, it doesn't bode well for the overall feeling that you care about your people in your district.
So, you understand that throughout this whole conversation, that money doesn't go away. It stays in communities, and it goes to community health centers. So, you, hang on, I've got a conversation here going. You understand that that has been, from the very beginning, that the money would go to community health centers. So, I think you're talking about the $525 million every year that goes into Planned Parenthood. Now, let's delve into this a little bit before everybody gets all excited. About 75% to 78% of that is already paid into Medicaid. So, those payments are coming, no matter what. If there is a, as you say, defunding, it just means that money is taken from there and goes into community health centers. Does the screenings for women still allows women to go in there? Well, because all of the Planned Parenthood people that have the signs up, tell me how many Planned Parenthood, uh, clinics there are in America. I know you know. How many? What'd you say? There's not one in Santa Clarita, you're right. Two? Is somebody holding up two? There's two. There's 14 qualified community health centers in this district. 14. So, and we will give you a list of those if you want. So, there are 14 of those. That means you have 14 opportunities, that's compared to two. So, I think that's a, a good understanding of that the money is staying in, it's going to where the screenings happen. The screenings happen. There's also dental care there. I don't think that Planned Parenthood does that. And there's also other care there that Planned Parenthood does not do. So, and there is screening for everybody who's yelling at me about screening. Yes. Okay. Where are we going? Where, I lost Joshua.
In the back.
Okay. Grab one in the back, and then we'll come right back up to the front.
Do you support wasting billions of dollars of taxpayers' money on a wall that would keep people out anyway?
I do not support wasting billions of dollars of taxpayers' money on the wall. So, I've said it all along, there's gotta be a stronger security on the border. There has. How many of you, raise your hand? If everybody can lower their hand first, raise your hand. How many have been to the border? Okay, so, how many have been to the border outside of California? All right, very good. So, you have probably all seen a border in Arizona that's about this high, it's a corrugated wall. It runs for thousands of yards. It's broken in pieces. It's not a border. It's not, at all. Now, some of you would probably want an open border, where we're just open to go back and forth. But if we are gonna have security on the border, there's got to be better than this three-foot corrugated wall. I do not... Okay, that's my answer. Okay, Joshua, come on up. Go right in here, wherever. This young lady in the white sweater? And remember, if everybody yells if you want to have answering, answer's gonna be short. Go ahead.
Representative Knight, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm a longtime educator in the Santa Clarita Valley. And I have a three-part question. Uh, the first part is, now, House Resolution 610 is the one that enables vouchers and also takes away ESSA, which provides necessary services for our students. Um, the second part, first, I want to ask how you're going to vote. Second, I'd like to know, um, how you're going to protect funding for public schools? And third, I'd like to know how you're going to protect those students who go to the private schools and charter schools with vouchers so that they, those schools have to abide by federal regulations like I do with Medicaid?
I've said this many times, I do support vouchers. I do think that vouchers are a great way. I, I do think that vouchers can help. Now, I understand my questions, answers are gonna be real short. Um, I also believe that there shouldn't be any money going to the federal government for education. Uh, it should be staying here and... Uh, it should be staying here at the state level and it shouldn't even go up to Sacramento. We can build a curriculum by retired educators, by retired superintendent... By retired superintendents that build a curriculum. The curriculum is the same across the state, you have to hit these marks. If you don't hit those marks, then... You're not getting there. But, that money should stay here at the local level. If we do that, we would have way more money than we do right now. As you understand, a dollar that goes to the federal government versus a state and it comes back down is way less than if it stayed at the local government. So, secondly, I haven't seen this, I haven't seen the bill, I haven't read it, so, until that happens, I won't tell you how we're gonna vote on that, but... Let's get her information. Yes, follow up?
Um, my, my concern is that with these federal vouchers being given to private and charter schools, that they will not be held accountable to the federal laws that help disavow...
No, I understand that, charter schools should absolutely be held accountable. Charter school is a public school. It's just a different type of a public school as it is to a traditional public school. I know this very well, I know this very well. I have two children that went through public school every year of their life. Let's get the microphone to her. Get the microphone to her. If you yell out, we'll just make that.
Who said that?
This is, this is ridiculous!
Let's take it to you, ma'am.
I don't need the mic! I don't need the mic, I'm a public school teacher. I've been in public schools for 30 years. Vouchers do nothing but take money from our students and give it to a private school. They don't have to follow the same testing, the same curriculum. They don't have to do anything that we as public educators have to do for our kids.
You can grab that area there too. Always there. Yes, sir?
Thank you for having the town hall. I gotta tell you, I originally had a question about the Affordable Care Act. And as I sit here, I have a statement. I'm a Vietnam vet. And I'm so disturbed about the way, the turn that my country has taken under the GOP. I don't recognize this nation anymore, I'm very disappointed and upset. I have questions, for example, with freedom of religion, or we're gonna keep Muslims out. We have so many freedoms that you want to take away. That's not who we are. We have, we had town halls up and down and I've read about them, and they disagree with you and you ignore them. It's happening nationwide and they're being ignored. I don't understand that. Your job is to serve, to do our bidding. Not yours. Not their party's. Please, do your job. We've got a president who has nominated ridiculous people that is helping... Leading you to lead America, not the GOP.
Sir, I, I appreciate you very much, I do, and thank you for your service. I'm, I'm gonna ask you a quick question, because I ask this of a lot of people, I do, and, and there's not a right answer to this. Just understand that. Everyone will tell me to do the right thing, they will, everyone will tell me to do the right thing. I understand that. And I have my morals and I have a good grasp of what's going on in the district. But understand that the right thing to you might be a little different than the right thing to a person eight rows over. So, everyone has their, their opinion, you have your opinion, and everyone in this room has their opinion. It is my job to try and take everyone's opinion and try and mold that into the best decision that can be made. That's a republic, that's a representative government. So, again, thank you very much for your service and if you want to respond to that, absolutely.
I'd be happy to. I assume, when you take the pulse of District 25, that's who you represent. But that is not the reality. The GOP in general, District 25 in particular, has not followed that mandate.
I understand this, sir, I don't want to interrupt, but my voting record in the last two years, if you've watched, has been 48%, conservative, 58%. So, if you would say, hey, Knight's up there, he's a 99% conservative voter, hate that guy. Okay, I get you. But my voting record in the scorecards was 58% conservative. So, it's hard for me to say that... Okay, all right, thank you, sir, thank you. Okay, let's come up to the front, Joshua, please. This young lady right here in the, in the sweater.
Some on this side. Hello, my name is Lorraine Rowe. I'm a retired Kaiser employee, a member of United Healthcare Workers West.
Been with you for 27 years.
Collection of 90,000 members, strong. And I just want to point out, we see you.
I see you.
Are you aware that 77,429 people in your congressional district have been covered by the Affordable Care Act? So, with that said, are you aware that many people will lose their health care if you do not support the continuation?
No, I, I disagree.
Also, I want to say this to you.
I disagree.
You said you were a Kaiser member.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um...
27 years.
I'm sure, just like my insurance is being covered, I'm a retired member, so I don't have to worry about my coverage. However, as a public figure, our tax money is somehow paying for your coverage. The level of coverage that you have with Kaiser...
Absolutely incorrect, I didn't take her from just Congress.
I, I want to make sure, I want to make sure that you feel that your constituents deserve the same level of care that you have and not have to search for it. And not have to search for it.
Absolutely, ma'am.
And also, I want to say, 65% of our homeless are veterans. And it's a sin and a shame that we do not take care of ours.
Ma'am, let me ask you, you live in this community, correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so you know of all of the veteran help that we do in this community, so I'm, I'm not gonna take that shot, because this community stands up for veterans. We don't do everything, but we stand up for our veterans, that is a fact. There are at least 14 organizations that work with veterans on homeless issues, on mental health care, on physical health care. I can go on and on about how we try. Now, again, we don't take care of 100% of them, but we do. This community does very well at trying to help our veterans, so I'm not gonna take that shot.
You are our voice, you are our voice.
Yes, ma'am.
You are our representative, and we expect you to stand up and speak for your constituent, not for your own personal beliefs. And what I'm saying, we have the statistics to stand behind it, and it's not fake information.
Okay, let's go over here, right there, young lady in the red sweater.
Hi, I, I just, um, as a fellow Christian, um, I, I think of Matthew 25. I was hungry and you fed me. I was in prison and you came to visit me. I was a stranger in a strange land, and you welcomed me. When we hear rhetoric like calling a human being illegal, when we see families literally being torn apart by ICE, it's, and then, you know, you voted for Trump, okay? So, this is what we want to know, we want to see you standing in front of cameras and taking the moral high ground with this president. Your thing will say nothing to us, we need to see you standing in front of a camera and saying, "I don't think a human being is illegal. I don't agree with these ICE detentions that are tearing families apart."
Okay, we'll go over here to the brown jacket.
First of all, I have a question. I'd like to thank you for coming out. I promised my wife I wouldn't stand up, but, uh, she's home and it doesn't bother me now.
She's watching?
Um, I'm an employer here, um, I have over a combined of 120 employees.
Thank you.
Last night, my wife and I sat at the dinner table, and we counted up, we were doing our taxes, and with all the special California taxes that we have to pay. And she and I was deciding whether we should wrap this thing up and get out of the state, or stay. We're reasonable folks. We believe there's room at the table for Democrats, Republicans, uh, for people with indifferent views. I sent one of my employees to the doctor last week, um, got the bill back, uh, $17 for an aspirin, $3,500 for the overnight stay. I mean, everything else, when they sent me that bill, I had a $12,000 bill. But I can go down to 7-Eleven and get aspirin for $69. What I'm saying is that I'm not against the Affordable Care Act, I think it's meaningful. But, the problem, I don't believe, is the insurance. I believe the problem is, you guys, you're never gonna be able to keep up with the cost until you get the cost in your head and tighten them up. These health providers and providing this service has absolutely taken this subsidized program and made a mockery of it. So, we're fighting over insurance, Republicans and Democrats, and that isn't the point. I wish that, uh, reasonable people can sit down at a table, I sit down with folks of all backgrounds and life, and we come up with solutions. Um, and I'm just afraid, and I'm saddened, and I want to just get the hell out of here sometime, because people aren't reasonable. And we can sit down at the table and figure this out, the insurance isn't the issue. It's the, the insurance companies are gonna keep funding it, but as long as we keep allowing the cost of this service to go through the roof, we'll never keep up with the escalating costs. And we'll be fighting here in 20 more years.
Thank you. Okay, right here on the end, right front of you.
All right. That's where you're keeping control. Congressman Knight, in January, you voted for House Resolution 5. These are the rules that you guys put in at the beginning of the 115th Congress. This resolution would allow for moving Social Security and Medicare from mandatory funding to discretionary appropriations, putting them in a position to be reduced or curtailed under future budgets. It also restricted the Congressional Budget Office on reporting the cost of repeal or reforming the Affordable Care Act. We are now hearing of a proposed Republican healthcare plan that only a selected few are allowed to see and review and will possibly be introduced in such a way as to limit any input and discussion. Representative Collins, Republican from New York, who sits on the House Energy and Commerce Committee reviewing this proposal, told Bloomberg Politics that the vote might take place before the Congressional Budget Office and the Joint Committee on Taxation gets a chance to produce a formal estimate of the bill's effects on insurance coverage and the federal budget. The ACA, which you said was done like a backroom deal, the ACA had over a year of committee hearings and floor debates with the Congressional Budget Office and Joint Committee on Taxation analyzing proposals every step of the way, not some hidden backroom deal. My questions to you are this. Do you support and will vote to move Social Security and Medicare from mandatory funding to discretionary appropriations and the funding uncertainties that entails? Do you support an open and honest discussion, like we had with the ACA in Congress, that will address and put in place either changes to fix the ACA or a bill that your party and the president, let me finish, has said will cover more people, have better coverage, and cost less? Additionally, today only 275 of your constituents were allowed in here, which is only approximately .04% of the population this conventionally protected district. Phone in town hall, phony meetings is not face-to-face. I also would ask that you would hold additional face-to-face town halls throughout your district on these and other issues on a regular basis.
Lot, lot of questions here, I'll take them as I remember them. Uh, first one was on discretionary spending or mandatory spending.
My questions, my questions, do you support and will vote to move Social Security and Medicare from mandatory funding to discretionary appropriations and the funding uncertainties that entails?
Social Security and Medicaid can stay in mandatory spending, and I can vote for that, absolutely. But understand, understand, right now, that spending is 69% of the budget. Very shortly, it's gonna grow to 80% of the budget. So, now, just understand, just understand that you cannot lower the deficit, you cannot lower the debt without having a handle on the whole budget. But, absolutely, I think that Social Security and Medicaid should be protected, keep it in mandatory spending.
But you're answering my question, would you vote to move it from mandatory spending to discretionary?
I said absolutely, keep it in mandatory spending.
Now, the other question is, do you support an open and honest discussion like we had with the ACA in Congress? Are you gonna let them put this bill...
But understand, sir, understand.
They have to put it in three days before you guys have to vote on it. So, I know how the system works, people, a lot of people don't understand. You can put it in on Monday, and you'll be voting in it on Wednesday, not a year like we did with the ACA.
You don't understand how the complete system works, or you would know that how we got ACA was when they got the 60th vote on a special... Remember, how we got ACA was on the 60th vote on a special election on that day. Now, hang on, gotta give context on this, because you know what you're talking about. You know that, and that's how we got that, on that midnight vote. Now, absolutely, I've said in front of everyone that yes. As soon as we get a bill, I'm gonna put that online so people can read it, so they can give me feedback. And they can say, hey, look, this is bad, this is good, can we talk about this? Sir, if you live in New York, you can talk to him. If you live in New York, you can talk to him. You know? And I just answered your question. I said I will put it online for people to see it. I said I will put it online for people to see it. Sir, I am not going to argue with you about what another congressman said. If I do that, I've got 433 more we've gotta go through. So, I'm only gonna tell you what I'm gonna do. When I get the bill, we'll put it out, people can read it. I can tell you this, you will have it more than that one day between that vote on ACA. That's what I would tell you. I recommend as long as I get it. I'm trying to go as much as I can through, and we've taken a lot over here, so, I can take the young lady back here.
I'm so honored to get to speak, thanks for picking me up.
Thanks for picking me. I'm Vicki Abramson. I'm a retired schoolteacher.
Thank you.
And one of my things I'm gonna be doing next Tuesday is working at the polls. So, I found out last week, when I was going through my training, that the ballot is in, believe it or not, 13 languages. And I thought to myself, yeah, it's wonderful, but except it's very expensive. It's expensive. And so, oh my goodness, I don't think I've got a very popular question here, but just let me ask it, please. I mean, we're all Americans, and we should be respectful of one another. What I see is a problem, though, because I wanna know if you think it might be a good idea to, as we become citizens, as people do become citizens... Uh-oh, there's another hot topic, I guess. But wouldn't it be a good idea to have just a minimal competency in English? Such that people can read, people can read? No, no, just... No, of course not. Of course not. You're not being very respectful. Come on now. What's wrong with that? I mean, this is America. Our mother tongue is English.
Yeah, I... I'm ready. Is that the question?
That's the question.
Yeah, I actually think that there should be an advancement toward learning English. Yes, absolutely. And we're gonna take two in the back, and then we're gonna wrap up. So, whoever you wanna pick back there, Joshua, who's been enthusiastic. And I'm gonna go back real quickly before we take another question. This town hall came out of a meeting of people that wanted to talk about ACA. I didn't pick this. So, for the gentleman here in the fourth row, I didn't pick this venue. They did. They said, can we have it at Chimbole? I said, absolutely. So, oh, yes.
Hey, Congressman Knight, thank you for taking my question, and I'll let you have an opportunity to do this. We haven't touched on this at all.
Okay.
Donald Trump and the GOP seem to be the party of law and order. They wanna protect Americans. So, we're gonna spend $25 billion on a wall we can't afford when we have a net zero immigration problem. We are going to try and initiate a travel ban to Muslim-majority countries when there hasn't been a single example of a Muslim refugee in America. However, however, you have 11,000 gun homicides in America every single year. 30,000 gun deaths, if you wanna include suicides and accidental deaths. Now, I know that conservatives are not big on, you know, they didn't like no-fly-no-buy. They're against universal background checks. They're against all these liberal solutions for how to reduce gun violence in America. 11,000 homicides a year is almost four 911s every single year in America. So, my question to you is, if you don't agree with universal background checks, you don't agree with banning automatic assault rifles, if none of those make sense to you, real specifically, what are your suggestions for reducing gun violence in America?
There should be background checks. I absolutely think of that. I absolutely think that there should be a requirement when you go in to buy a firearm. And we see that here in California, we see that in many other states. And I think that that is a part of owning a firearm. We do background checks, we do a fee, a test to get the firearm, all of those types of things. And I think you're talking specifically about handguns, because that's where the background checks come in. That's where a lot of this comes in, for the most part. So, I do, I do think that we should have background checks. Now, I also think...
You voted to let schizophrenics and mental health people have guns just last month. How dare you make that law?
I do think that when President Obama makes a law like this gentleman is yelling at, he jumped too far. And the reason he did that... And there has been several articles saying that if you're going to go too far, then you are going to be going into the rights. And that is...
You're endangering people!
Go ahead.
Again, again, $25 billion for a southern wall, a Muslim ban to prevent phantom terrorists that don't exist. Do you feel that 11,000 gun deaths a year are the price we should pay for the Second Amendment? Or are you in favor of more robust gun reform to reduce gun violence beyond what we're already doing? Are there any additional things, or do you think we're doing enough?
Well, understand, understand the previous party here that pushed forward this no-fly-no-buy was ridiculous, and everybody knows that. Out that no-fly-no-buy, out that no-fly-no-buy, we had pulled out hundreds of people. We pulled out 40 nuns. We pulled out many schoolteachers. We pulled out all kinds of things. So, if we're gonna do no-fly-no-buy, then let's work on the 497,000 people or so that we know are no terrorists, are no, have a problem coming into this country. We can start on that, absolutely.
That NRA money pays good, doesn't it?
Okay, last one, right in front. We're gonna go one of these veterans right here. Okay. Can't touch that.
Question, Congressman. We're going to support the increase in national defense. Where do you stand on if ACA goes into repeal? If we reduce Medi-Cal, Medicaid here in California, what do you think the effects are gonna be?
Oh, I think there will be some effects. That's why I think that we should be working with not just the states that have accepted Obamacare, but the ones who have rejected Obamacare, for the most part. So, and you're gonna see this as the plan kind of evolves. But if we're gonna do a block grant, if we're going to do money attached to a certain person, those things will give a lot of flexibility for Governor Brown and for other governors to use those. Now, say what you want, but as ACA was rolling out, we didn't have this ability to do those types of things. So, and you've gotta understand that cost is an issue on anything that happens. If the cost is going up too quickly, like we've seen, we have to do some repair. That's what we're trying to do in repair. But I agree with you, sir, that if you can't make sure that Medicaid, Medicare issues are going to be taken care of, then you kinda gotta go back to the drawing board. And understand, understand Medicaid, everyone understands what Medicaid was made for. 65 older, disabled, blind, pregnant, right? Now, now, it has been opened up so that we have about a million people on there that are 25 to 35, no dependents, able-bodied, working. So, if we're gonna open it up and expand it that quickly, the cost is gonna go up that quickly. So, and I heard it over here, you can raise taxes, you can do all these types of things. You're absolutely, you're absolutely right. We can do a lot of those things, but we gotta pay for it sometime. Okay. Hang on, hang on. And I said I would go until about 9:40, because they have this room at 10 o'clock, and I told them that we would be out of here. I think that is my last question, because it seems like about 52% of the group wants that. And then we'll wrap this up. I believe that President Trump should release the tax. Let's say thank you to everyone for coming. Thank you to the press. Of course, thank you to the National Security Department. Thank you.
So, I don't know if you folks are interested in fact-checking, but two of the people who were at the meeting where he said they picked the venue are here, and that is what happened. And so, there are two people here you can speak with who will tell you that they met with him, and it was Steve Knight's office who picked this venue.